Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to reconvene the public session for the Norco City Council meeting. First item is reports of actions taken in closed session with the city attorney.
Yes, the city council discussing closed session that matter listed on the closed sessioned agenda, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll have the pleas of allegiance followed by the invocation both given by council member Robin Grunmeyer.
Freddie, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I have a cute story first. Our city clerk asks council members who would like to give the invocation today. Councilman Newton promptly elected that I go ahead and give the invocation for today, and to which I responded to him, and I said, "Well, Greg, I'm sure you would do a great job giving the invocation today." And his response is, "Only if we wanted floods and locusts," which I don't think we have staffing or resources for at this time. So here I am, giving the invocation. I'd like to read from Psalm 20. And this was, I reached out to my pastor, so shout out to Pastor John today, for some words for all of us today. So from Psalm 20, "May the Lord answer you when you are in distress; may the name of God of Jacob protect you; may he send you help from the sanctuary and grant you support from Zion; may he remember all of your sacrifices and accept your burnt offerings; may he give you the desire of your heart and make all your plans succeed. May we shout for joy over your victory and lift up our banners in the name of our God. May the Lord grant all of your requests. Now this I know: The Lord gives victory to his anointed. He answers from his heavenly sanctuary with the victorious power of his right hand. Some trust in chariots and some in horses, but we will trust in the name of the Lord our God. They are brought to their knees and fall, but we rise up and stand firm. Lord, give victory to the king; answer us when we call." Please join me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, we ask today that you would hear our prayers, that you would be with us during this time of uncertainty and weariness. I pray, Lord, that you would give strength to our staff, our public safety officials, and all of those working on the front lines of this battle to flatten the curve of this virus. Lord, I pray that you would be with our residents as they shelter at home. There are stresses that are on everyone at this time, Lord, and you know what those are. I pray that you would give comfort to our residents and to our staff, knowing, Lord, that we will get through this, and just like it says in Psalms, "The people of the Lord will be victorious." Lord, please be with us, help us to stand strong, hear our prayers. In Jesus' name we all pray. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments or any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless matters of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three. Anyone want to pull any items?
Mayor, item D and E.
Item D and E. Okay, anybody else got any to pull? We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, we'll go on to item two, is the items pulled from the consent calendar. Ted, you pulled item D, you can start with it first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is just a real quick question. I know, Sam, you're in here, maybe you can answer this. Confirm that Nova, before they put the fence in, is going to do the grading in the trail maintenance on Sixth Street, correct? Before they put the fence in?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason I brought that up is, Sunday, as I was making an essential trip, we had one of our residents with his tractor running a disc down the trail on Sixth Street. So I just want the residents to know that Nova's going to be working on the trail to get it up to the correct standards. So with that, I'll motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, Ted, you also have item E.
Yeah, and Sam, I don't know if you know, confirm that when, this is a clarification, when they put the water tank in there, they're not going to go near the contaminant flume or anything like that that's on the Wiley property, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I just, again, for the residents to know that when they see this construction crews up there, they're not going to be down lower, do not grade anything, they're just going to be taking a tank out and putting a new tank in. All right, thank you. And with that, I'll move to approve.
A motion and a second, please vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. All right, item three is public comments. This is the time when persons viewing wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk at the city address there so that you may be recognized. Your comments will be read at this time into the record. The Raffael Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We have not received any public comments, Mayor.
Have no public comments, thank you. All right, number four, public hearings. Order of the public hearing. Number one is staff presentation. Two is council questions of staff. Three is open public hearing. Public comments in favor, against, neutral, they're emailed in. Close of public hearing, council discussion and action. First item is item A, public hearing ordinance, and that is the city engineer.
I hope you can hear me through this mask, but give it a shot.
Real good.
The requirement in the state of California, in order to use radar to cite individuals that are speeding, you have to have an engineer's report prepared by a traffic engineer and certified by the city council through a public hearing process. The last two reports have been done by Albert Grover and Associates, so the city elected to go with Albert Grover for the third report. That's the report that's in front of you today. The issues I think that the city council may be concerned with is, are we raising any speed limits in the city? Yes, there's two streets that we have raising speed limits. That is on Hamner Avenue in the Silver Lakes area, and that actually is joining a 50 mile per hour in Eastvale. Staff contacted Eastvale, we know that they're going through the same process, and we're not sure if they're going to try to lower their 50 mile per hour to 45. And the 45 is where we really would like to be, except there's no justification for, based on the 85th percentile and all the other little intricacies that we, the traffic engineers put into it to try to get a lower speed limit. So that's, we're pretty much locked into that. The other one is on Valley View, and that's getting raised, I think it's from 25 to 30. Again, the 85th percentile. It's unfortunate that we have to use the 85th percentile to establish speed limits, but that's the way the law is written. Norco, we're very fortunate in that in the vehicle code, there's actually a subsection in there that allows us, because of the equestrian element, to lower the speed limits by five miles per hour. The traffic engineers that prepare this report have done it for us for 12, 14 years now. They know the city, they know that rule. They also know the city up in the north part of town where we have curvilinear streets and grades, and they take all of that into consideration when they prepare this report. But it's unfortunate, we still have two streets that go up in speed, but until there is a, traffic is slowed down by enforcement, we're pretty much locked into that. If the council elects to lower that speed limit, the sheriff's department cannot use radar on those streets to ticket individuals. That's briefly the staff report. There's a lot of details in the report, but I'm not going to go through the code sections of the vehicle code, any municipal code, et cetera. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions of Dominic?
Go ahead, you want, go ahead.
Go ahead, Greg.
You can hear that all right?
Yes, I can.
Excuse me. You have First Street from Valley View to Corona Avenue also increasing. You had mentioned just two streets that increase. You also show First Street from Valley View to Corona Avenue.
First Street, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I missed that one.
On page four.
Yeah. I tried to memorize the report before I get here, and I missed that one.
Okay. Well, I have comments on that, but I can certainly wait, because I don't support that. I just wanted to clarify that there's three at this time.
Sorry, I have to take my glasses off, I'm fogging up.
That's why. That's all I had at this time.
Robin, did you have anything?
Question for you, Dominic. North Drive is decreasing from 40 to 35, which is excellent. My question for you is, we incorporated a bunch of traffic calming over on North with the intent and purpose to get the speeds lowered. So I would say that this report verifies that those traffic calming devices do indeed work, that we lowered people's speeds so much so that we can now officially even lower the speed limit on the street. So then that goes to my question, where we're looking at on Hamner, are there traffic calming devices that the city can incorporate in the next year or two that can potentially slow people down that will then result in us being able to keep that speed limit, well, we can't keep it now, but in the next study, lower that speed limit back down?
Are you talking to Hamner Avenue in the Silver Lakes area, Hamner Avenue in the, generally through Hamner Avenue?
No, in the Silver Lakes where we're going from 45 to 50.
I can speak with the sheriff's department, or the city manager can speak with the sheriff's department for enforcement, and trying to establish a little bit more enforcement, because remember, the 85th percentile is that 50 mile per hour speed.
Right.
People are actually doing faster than that, and if we can actually start moving that faster traffic down closer, we can get the 85th percentile down. So it's a matter of, the only thing I can see there is enforcement.
Okay, so you don't see an integration or an ability to integrate any other traffic calming?
No, that's a major arterial highway, and it's very difficult to narrow the lanes down, especially in that area that we have a lot of horse traffic, vehicle traffic for the equestrians going into the Silver Lakes. I don't like narrowing lanes down to, you know, 10 and a half feet, 11 feet. It just causes the trailers with some issues.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Just want to make sure I'm clear on something. So the raising and lowering of all these speed limits makes it possible to do radar, and if we don't do this, then we can't use radar?
If you don't pass this report, you'll not be able to use radars.
On these specific streets?
On these specific streets.
So if you, let's say we just keep the speed limit at Third Valley View to Hamner, we don't increase to 30, keep it at 25, we can't use radar?
That is correct, sir.
And you actually, it's not only radar, but you can't enforce, the sheriff's department has a difficult time enforcing the speed limit. I mean, whether they cite them for prima facie or something else, or they followed them along in their car. Just the courts, unless you meet the criteria, the vehicle code will not support citations.
Yeah. Following a car is pacing, and you have to have a great distance to pace that car, and it's very difficult to do.
All right, thank you very much. That's all.
Ted?
Yeah, Dominic, on Valley Drive, the one between Country Club Drive to Freezing Street, and I still don't understand, that's not our street. It's not dedicated to the city, correct?
It's not dedicated to the city, but that section is being acted as it is dedicated to the city, and we are doing the maintenance on that section.
Okay, so that's, and that's why we can put that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's why we incorporated it into this report.
Okay. I mean, and I'm just going to pick on that one street, because when we go through, and when the lieutenant has his groups out there doing their radar on those streets, and we in enforcement, will somebody, can somebody, because it's not our street, can they complain about it? And maybe John knows. I mean, is it valid? It's...
No, that, it's perfectly permissible for cities, based upon permission from the private property owner, to enforce speed limits on private streets. I mean, it's pretty typical in guard gate communities, for example, that they'll dedicate the streets for the purposes of either CHP or the sheriff's control.
So we know that that, the owner has actually allowed us to do that?
Yes.
And we had that written somewhere, because I do recall in Canyon Lake, those streets were all private, and we could not run radar or radar in there because of the fact they were private until they incorporated. That's why I'm just asking.
Yeah. I wasn't around when that street, that project went in. It's probably the only project I was not around for. But yes, we've been enforcing on that street ever since I've been with the city, and we've also considered it quasi-public to do enforcement on it. And whether it's been written down way back 18 years ago, I'm not certain.
We did, we accepted it as a public street, but not for the purposes of maintenance on the map. But that doesn't mean we can't enforce speed limits.
All right, I just don't want that to be a point of issue when somebody wants to fight a citation on there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dominic, I've got two streets for you. Branding Iron Lane from Dapple Gray Lane to Wild Horse is 25, and Detroit, Valley View to Hamner is 25. I thought they had always been 25. I mean, other than the Cut Two, people drive at 50.
I can address Detroit. The last report in Detroit said it back at 25. The street name signs were never changed.
Okay, because I've never seen a, never really ever seen a sign over there, but I remember several years ago, we put in a stop sign there at Woodard, where Woodard comes into Detroit, so it would slow people down. But there's a stop sign at every block along there, except Old Hamner. And I didn't know that it had been anything but 25 all these years.
It just, the sign, I went through the reports, the sign had just never been changed.
Okay, and you don't know about Dapple Gray?
Brandy Iron or Dapple Gray?
Right.
No, I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we have any public comments on this? On any of these?
I'm just double checking to make sure nothing's come in again. We have no public comments.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Who wants to start off? Greg?
I guess this is going to go back to you, Dominic. So the first one I have a problem with is increasing the speed on First Street from Valley View Avenue to Corona Avenue. I know that's a wide open street, it's residential, and it's also an equestrian trail on the south side. And I really can't see the logic in increasing that, that speed. But I guess part to what, like John was saying, that you can't use radar, but if I'm going 60 miles an hour down that street, I can still get a ticket, or all tickets dismissed?
If they use a radar on a street that's not in this report, that's not a residential type street, that will get dismissed.
And it doesn't matter if it's 60 miles an hour?
If they pace, if the sheriff's department patrol paces that car and can establish that it was doing 60 miles an hour in a 25 zone or a 30 zone, that probably will hold up in court. But we have some judges, I'll admit to it, that threw out a portion of the last traffic because the engineer didn't sign it in the correct spot that he or she wanted it signed in. So I'd be real cautious in...
That's your friend.
I'd be real cautious in attempting to do something that's not in this report. I would say that the sheriff's department will have an issue with trying to cite somebody on that street.
I guess where I'm having a problem, so let's say that street, for example, and they use radar, but they're tagged at 60 miles an hour. And okay, so it should, instead of 25, it should be 30. That's a free pass? No matter what your speed is?
They would probably cite them for reckless.
Okay.
It's not, wouldn't be a speed citation.
All right. You couldn't write a speed citation, is what you're saying?
John seems to be real experienced at reckless driving, so I just made a comment.
I've seen his TV commercials. I guess that's the part I don't understand, that you just get a free pass then on whatever speed you're going.
You get the reckless driving ticket. And I'm not sure how that relates to a speeding ticket.
All right. Well, I have a problem with that one. Like I said, it's a residential area, and it has, it's an equestrian area. So I just don't get why we're raising that, that speed on that street.
Well, I know the engineers have prepared the report, and they are very, very fervive and are liberal in adapting everything they can to reduce the speeds. So I know they've done everything they can on those streets.
Okay, and then, Third Street from Valley View to Hamner, that's such a short section to begin with. I don't know really how to make a call on that one. There is an equestrian trail once again that connects all the way around.
Well, I'm sure they dropped that 5 miles an hour. It probably, the 85th percentile was probably up in the 35 range when they put into the equestrian element on there, it probably is what dropped it to 30.
Okay. Like I said, that's such a short section there. And then on Hamner Avenue from North City Limits, that's all the way to Sixth Street. And then, so we have an equestrian crossing in that area, and so we're looking to take from Sixth, say if we're going north, that's from Sixth Street, will be 50 miles an hour. Is that Chestnut Street there? And then Detroit?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. So all that's going to change to 50 miles an hour?
That's also correct.
And I'm sure everyone here has experienced that going north on Hamner, that you have that right turn lane to Detroit, that is the 50 miles an hour to get them up to speed so then they can get out of that right turn lane only and run the red light and cut you off and keep heading north, because that's the reality of it. So I don't see any reason to raise that speed limit either.
Well, what you can do is, if you want to pull a couple of these streets out and don't, and have them reevaluated, that can, you can pass the rest of the report, pull the streets that you have concerns with out of the report, leave the speed limit as what it is today. Once we get over this virus that's going around and traffic goes back to normal and schools back in session, you can be reevaluated.
That's a good suggestion.
And then we'll just bring back a supplemental report for those two streets or three streets that you want to pull out.
The three that are increasing?
Yep.
Or proposed to increase?
Certainly could do that.
That's a real good suggestion. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Kevin?
What's the cost of that additional survey?
It's probably going to be somewhere in the, we'll probably, I'll probably do it in-house myself versus going to this company, so you're probably looking at about 2,500 bucks or something.
And then what's the, I mean, is there a chance that we might be able to keep with these speed limits? Because the one thing, I think it's more dangerous to the horses if we can't enforce the speed, because the truth is, nobody, that 5 miles an hour isn't going to, these streets for 45 years were 35 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour. But if we can't use the radar, then I'm concerned for the people going 45 miles an hour, because I don't really want patrol cars, like, pacing down those different streets. So is there a chance that by keeping the same speed limits, that we may discover that we can in fact enforce using radar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good with that, then.
And you might take a look at that particular street in the traffic study, in the survey, that the 85th percentile currently is 37 miles an hour.
And so it could go up?
Could very definitely go up, too.
So we might be looking at a faster speed limit?
We would hope not, but there's always that possibility.
Hmm. All right, well, let me think on that.
Ted?
I'm going to be concerned, just like Councilman Newton on the Hamner Avenue there by Detroit. That road's going to get widened here, hopefully in the next three years. So that's going to make a big difference on the street and how that's going to be handled. So if we approved everyone but, except these three that we have issues with, I mean, I have an issue with raising the speed limit in these streets, we can do that. What's the timeframe of going back then, or we have to have these done? Is there?
The, there's an August deadline, I believe, that has, the report has to be in. And so... and certified to the court system. Because that's, August is when the, the old wind goes away.
And these?
Now, again, to do the survey, I don't think we're going to get any survey done between now and August, because until the traffic volumes get back to normal, where they were before the virus hit, we will not be doing traffic counts or any speed surveys.
Okay. And these are good for about three years?
The reports are good for seven.
Dom, you can correct me if I'm incorrect about this, but the other, the other alternative is to adopt the report as it's presented and direct the surveys to be done. Hopefully you'll get a survey which says that you can reduce it. I mean, there's nothing which says that you can't reduce speed limits.
Yeah, that is correct, and the cost to go ahead and put this report and put new signs up is very minimal. I think, I think the estimate I saw from Chad one time for signs, like $350 a sign, and he has them installed and that type of thing. So you got three, four, five, six stop sign, or excuse me, speed limit sign, so you're looking at $1,200, $1,500 tops to go ahead and redo those streets. I think I buried that cost somewhere in this report.
You know, and I'm looking at First Street between Valley View Avenue and Corona Avenue, and that, those people, you know, they've been really, we hit them with the construction there at Second and Valley View, and now they're going to go through, and they're going to feel like they're getting hammered. That's why I'm concerned about not doing that so much with them, especially on that street. You know, anything we can do, but if we have to approve, and then you go back and do that, that might be an option too. So, thank you.
I understand where Ted's going, but I'd be more concerned that we can't use radar and enforce the speed limit, because there's a lot of problems on that street in terms of speeding and things, because that's where the high school goes all the time. So I like the idea that we pass it, but then we, if I understand correctly, pass it and then we, we relook at that speed limit so that we can at least between now and then, keep the enforcement going.
Again, I'm not trying to talk into that alternative, but the one positive thing is that if you don't do anything and you relook at them, as Dom said, you could come back with a higher speed limit.
Right.
At least if you look at it again, then you can, thank you, and put it in a drawer.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about that too, but mainly, I mean, how am I going to explain to somebody, gee, sorry, we didn't raise your speed limit five miles an hour, so we can't have radar? Because that's probably the number one complaint I get, is that gee, how come there's never a policeman on my street? So, anyway, that's all, but I see both sides. I see both sides.
Robin?
So, under discussion, I just have a couple of things. The first one is, when you're looking at the 85th percentile, like on First Street from Valley View to Corona, it's 37 miles an hour. It's unsafe. So if we bump it up to the 30, and maybe we work with law enforcement and do some concentrated enforcement in some of these three streets that we're having concerns with, I think that's going to be much more effective than putting this on the table or making us wait to do that. Again, the other one, Hamner, between the city limits and Sixth Street, the 85th percentile was 53 miles an hour. So I just, I would prefer that we go with what the engineers have recommended, and then if we don't like it, then we increase enforcement and we look at other ways. That's going to naturally slow people down so that when this is done again, maybe at the beginning of the year, that will follow within the regulations of the laws to get where we want to go. But, you know, and I think about Third Street between Valley View and Hamner, that, most of it is commercial, not all of it, but a good percentage of it is commercial, and you're looking at the kids that are getting off on Second Street, they're going up to Valley View, and they're trying to get to school. And so I would rather bump at five and still nail them when they're going over that speed limit. And so I just would rather pass this the way it is. And, you know, we have two full-time traffic enforcement deputies now. I think we have a little bit more leeway on, on that end of it. And we kind of go from there. Obviously, we don't want to raise any speed limits in town because of the equestrian nature and all of that, but, you know, we also need to make sure we're following the letter of the law and doing what we need to do. And, and I think sometimes we try and focus on the exceptions too much. Let's just get to where we're following the letter of the law and then kind of play by that playbook and make it work for what we need to do. So that's my opinion on this particular matter.
Okay, before you make that into a motion, I got to ask, Lieutenant, did you want to chime in on this? Did you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. All right. Robin, we do have another motion.
I move to approve the acceptance of the traffic speed survey report.
Yes.
Correct? Ordinance 1058.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco establishing prima facie speed limits on certain streets in the city of Norco and amending Chapter 10.12.010 through 10.12.030 of the Norco Municipal Code.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's please vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous?
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Dominic. Okay, our next item is City Council, City Manager, Staff, Communications. We'll start with you, Kevin.
I have a minor thing, Brian. I know during this time, I don't expect you to do anything, but at some point, can we, the, you know, it's the little things right now that people, that just, we need to make them feel kind of secure. It's the clips and the fences. We've talked about this before. I mean, truthfully, no offense to anybody, if it were me, I would just fix the fence in front of my house, but apparently the clips and the fences up in the hills, they're not there, so what happens is the cross rails just keep dropping out of the poles. And again, I don't expect anything to happen right now because just the way things are, but at some point, if we could find out why some have clips, some don't, why they keep falling out. And then, and again, it's just such a minor negligible thing, but it's one of those things that people go, you know, if you get it fixed, it makes it feel secure, I think. And then the second thing, and I can't remember the bill all of a sudden, but Mr. Wiener's added again, and his goal is to erase all R1 zoning. And what I would like to do is, as a council, I would like to make sure that, one, we send a letter to Mr. Wiener, but also, one of the things that Senator Roth, who at the final hour kind of dropped out of the whole thing, he co-sponsored the last bill. He's claimed he never heard from any of his communities, and yet we sent letters, Eastville sent letters. So I would really like to put him on notice that this whole putting rats in a cage, it needs to be abandoned. The taking away, stripping away the zoning of a city is just, I mean, this whole virus thing, people sitting on top of each other, we're noticing those are sort of the epicenters of some of this stuff. But more importantly, I think we need to let them know right up front, we need to protect local control. And I'm wondering if as a council, do we have to agendize that, or can we just send a letter stating we are in... What's the, do you know the number of that? Yeah, but it's Wiener's new bill. Can, do we have to agendize it?
I think if all you're talking about is sending a letter, that's fine.
Is, is people in agreement just to let him know, we're against this bill and we want to protect local control and hope he will protect us? Are you guys all on board with that?
Everybody in agreement.
Okay.
We're all in agreement with that.
That's all, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Ted?
Yeah, I want to thank all the members of the Western Community Energy. Today was the first day we started WCE officially, so you're, if you didn't opt out, you're getting power from WCE now. Well, you're getting energy from them. But I want to thank all the city managers, Andy, for being with me on that board and helping along with the WR cog and then the WCE staff. Two and a half years, or better, worked to put this thing together, and I've got it started. So three cities went online today, four more go online in another month. So we get going. And then Brian and Andy, I want to thank you guys' staff, appreciate all the work they've been doing over, since all this pandemic started and the restrictions they have. The one thing, and like I said, I still volunteer when I can up there, you know, keeping my safe distance. But it's really important, going up there, I know some people just, they want to be out and about, and it's important that they keep the safe distancing, but that comes back in where we really need our staff to be available at the parks, just to come around and just remind them, you know, the parks are closed and not to use the equipment up there, it's, they do that at their own risk. There was an exercise group up there the other day. So anything we can do, especially with our employees, to keep them on somewhat of a normal schedule, even though we're not in normal times, because they have to live their lives too. So anything we can do to keep as normal as possible when they're out and about, I think would help them and their psyche. So that's enough, thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
And even though a lot of our staff is telecommuting, they are continuing to perform their, again, essential functions, and that's consistent with what most cities in Riverside are doing. At any given city hall, there are probably a handful of employees that are available at city hall at any given time. That doesn't mean that the work is still, is not being done. The essential functions of the city continues to go on. Our public work staff, our public safety staff, planning, building, and administrative staff, they are still either showing up occasionally at city hall or doing their, their job from home. That might change. We know that things are changing here and everywhere else. For example, some cities have actually gone to totally electronic meeting. So this city council meeting, depending on how things happen, may go to that. Other cities have gone to once a month, city council meeting to accommodate the situation. But there are some lessons we've learned, obviously, as far as being able to telecommute from home for employees. One of the things we're going to do in the future is make sure we have enough laptops so that employees can borrow and walk from home as the, as the need arises. It's my understanding that our employees that are currently experiencing some drops in the ability to telecommute from home. But with this uncertainty, we are continuing to adjust and continue to learn. But the key important thing is that most of the city functions are still ongoing.
Thank you, Andy. John?
To reiterate what, what the city manager said, is your public safety staff is still fully functional. We're still responding to calls. I'm going to suffocate in this thing. We're still handling calls. We still, we do have strict guidelines, procedures, how we're handling most calls. If we can handle it over the phone, we're handling it over the phone. We're trying to limit our exposure with our personnel, and so, but we do have a lot of protective equipment, so our deputies are donning and doffing a lot of protective equipment, but we're going through it pretty quick. So just know that public safety is fully functional, and I know speaking for fire just as well, fire's fully functional at this point, so.
Thank you. Sam? Steve?
Echo to everybody. All staff were issued a PVE, which includes a mask, glasses, gloves, sanitation spray, and those are, some of that are refillable or replaceable. And so every staff person who is working, and even those who are telecommuting, will get one, as well as part-time staff, to make sure if they engage the public, they do have those on, or if they're in the workplace, they can wear those. We're continuing to follow up and make sure that we are cleaning and doing the things that we need to during this pandemic. Today was really interesting. Dana and her staff, along with Sam, did our first bid opening outside, to be a little different, in the fresh air, and everybody wore their masks, gloves, et cetera. And so we are trying to do everything that we can to adhere to the rules, and we will continue to doing that. Tomorrow, we will be bringing out new signs within the park systems. These signs will talk about separation and space, talk about the, what is closed. And in regards, the parks are open for exercise, walking. If you do walk your dog, you need to make sure you have it on a leash. And that the playgrounds are closed, bathrooms are closed. We will be probably also closing all drinking faucets, and we will be posting that as well. Our new signage asks them to bring water and follow all the CDE rules. We do have staff, as noted, that will be reminding people to try to keep that distance. So we are doing everything we can to cover the parks in that way. The arenas, exercise arenas, are open. They just got groomed, so they were closed and they are open today, although we are looking at some rain coming in into next week, so we'll see how that plays out. But all the arenas in the park are open. We also, in our posting and signage, we ask those who are riding to try and keep that social distancing as well. And if you're waiting to get in one of the warm-up arenas, please make sure that you do not monopolize the arena time if you're in there, to let others who are in wait have time in there as well. And so we're doing everything we can to try and keep people out, and there's a lot to be said and read about now about getting out in the outdoors, trying to maintain that social distancing, that it's a healthy mind and a healthy body that helps you get through what we're all going through. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, a quick clarification on Brian, because you said all the arenas are...
Let me clarify, our, our outside parks that have what I call our warm-up arenas within the parks are open. Ingalls is completely closed and shut down. Also, Waymak and Sports Complex is completely shut down. Silver Lakes is closed and shut down, except for the restaurant does do takeout by order. And so parks like Ted Brooks, Pacer, Norco Hills, Ridge Ranch, and also Hawks Crest, those arenas are open. Basin, we're going to be getting to regrooming that, and then that will be open soon as well.
Matt, I forgot about you. I can't see you back there. Do you have anything to add? Thank you. Dana? Mr. Newton?
Thank you. Just wanted to shout out to Public Works that had a couple residents contact me today about a couple of situations on one of their streets. And Sam, I'd like you to pass on to Terry and your crews, they got on it right away, and just kudos to them. I appreciate all you do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just do a short report on what I know what's going on with the school district. The intent is, we are on spring break right now. The meal program for students will start back up on Monday, and we'll go through however long we're on closure. And then online enrichment for our students will start on April 13th, where teachers will be posting office hours, posting enrichment work and things like that for students. So if you're a parent or a student and you're watching this, please make sure and reach out to your school site if you're having a problem logging on or getting to the information that you need to get to. that you need to get to, as far as that goes. The second thing I'd like to talk about, if anybody is facing any food insecurity issues, there are several organizations in the community that are available with assistance. I know at the high school, the FFA group has a food pantry that is fully operational, so please don't, during this time, go without. Please make sure and reach out and get assistance. And again, we will be following all the social distancing and all of the rules and regulations, but we want to make sure if there are people in need, that you're getting the services that you need. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had one more thing, just to, for the public who aren't here, and reach out to them. This week, we launched on our website, the page Virtual Recreation. So, you can go to the city's website, and you're able to actually go and do virtual recreation. There's storytelling, there's games to be played, there's art projects, and they take you to various lengths so that if you're at home with your children, it gives you a variety of different activities that you can participate in, and that is on the city's webpage and the Parks and Recreation Department, so you can go and do your own virtual recreation. And to be announcing, we are currently working on a very special program, which will be a virtual Easter egg hunt, so be looking forward on that on the website as well. And our senior congregant mills are still being handled every Friday.
Okay, thank you. And Andy and Brian and all you department heads and everything, I want to, want you to pass this along, thank, thank all the workers in city hall and out in the field for still working and being able to work, and we appreciate everything that you guys and that they're doing, and the ones that are ill, we pray for them and hope they get better, but like I said, appreciate, appreciate everything you guys have done and are doing, and I know it's tough running shorthanded and everything, but I want to thank, thank all of you again, and with nothing else, we will adjourn. Thank you.